I'd like to welcome everybody that's here and we'll go around the Zoom and have everybody introduce themselves. Then we'll go to those in Boise and then on the telephone. So, welcome. Norman Wright, Chair, next.
Kathy Romer, Vice Chair, excuse me.
That's all right.
This is Wendy Pratt on the Commission. I'm in Blackfoot.
Next.
Frances Perk, you're Saltwater Administrator.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Next.
Chantel Chapel-Milton with the AG's Office.
Welcome, Chantel. Next.
Mike, Legislative Services Office.
Okay, Mike, and I heard you at the Legislative Service Office. Who was there?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's Rob Seppich.
Oh, thanks, Rob. Okay, next. Okay, who's in Boise there?
Chuck Penzer with the Saltwater Conservation Commission.
Thanks, Chuck.
Joe Peterson with the Commission as well.
Thank you, Joe.
Terry Merson with the Commission.
Nellin Trapp with the Commission.
Rachel Mesnick with the Commission.
Crystal Rosen with the Commission.
Amanda Farman with the Commission.
Okay, anybody on the telephone?
Terry, I don't think, Norman, the Commissioner, the Chair heard you.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, the phone.
Oh.
Terry Hobelheimer with the Commission.
Thanks, Chuck. Anyone else? Anybody that we missed? Okay, we thank all of you being here. Crystal, should we go ahead and do a roll column?
Yes, sir. Chairman Norman Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Kathy Romer.
Here.
Commissioner Jerry Trevisch. Commissioner Eric Olson. Commissioner Wendy Pratt.
Here.
Okay. The stage will form, we'll continue forward and hopefully Eric will join us soon. The next Agenda Item is report. Mr. Chairman, anything you'd like to tell us?
I don't have anything today, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Anything that Chantel would like to grace us with?
Sorry, it's taking me forever to unmute. No, I can, I think everything I'm talking about is related to an Agenda Item. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, and then we had gentlemen from the Department of Financial Management. Rob.
I think that's Rob Seppich with Legislative Services.
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, nothing to report here, just listening in to see how things are going to be going.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, agenda review, I don't believe we have anything that needs to be changed at this time. So we'll continue on with the Administrators' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a very quick update this month. Basically, as you and Commissioner Romer know, we were requested to write a letter of support for the Rock Creek Ranch. They applied to Congressman Simpson's fund and they need to build some infrastructure out at the ranch. And so I did confer with both you and Commissioner Romer and went ahead and the letter of support is attached in the Agenda Packet. If there are any questions about that? Mr. Chair?
I don't have anybody, but to the rest of it, Wendy, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Did, Terry, refresh my memory, it seems like you had talked to us about Rinker Rock Creek wanting to make sure that there was producer engagement and that the research was really applicable to the real world. Am I remembering that correct and can you kind of tell us if that's progressing along? I just think that's such an important part of that research facility.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I almost called you Romer, Pratt, Commissioner Pratt. As we've talked about before, I've been involved in the transitioning of the Rinker Rock Creek Ranch from ownership by the Wood River Land Trust and the Nature Conservancy to the University of Idaho's College of Agriculture and Life Sciences and the College of Natural Resources. I currently serve as Chair for the it's a collaborative group that has federal and state agencies and some nonprofits that are involved as well as producer groups like the Idaho Cattle Association. The goal of the ranch is to provide research opportunities for a critical intersection of conservation, recreation, and and production agriculture in that area between the Wood River Valley and the Camas Prairie. And so it's really a pretty good laboratory for exploring research that will help all of the above and also further collaborative efforts between urban tourism destinations and farming communities and things like that. We just have, are finalizing our first strategic plan that will guide that process of making sure that research is appropriate to all of those concerns and it keeps the university on track. I will bring a copy hopefully of the approved strategic plan in June. So that's coming and you'll be able to take a look at that. But a really important aspect of the ranch and the research there is that producers are involved and plans are underway to have, both to go out to producers where they are and kind of discuss the issues and the trends that producers see and also to bring them into the ranch to have a kind of kick the tires day where they see what research is being done. They can share what additional research should be done. But it has to do with rangeland and wildlife and there's some projects that have to do with the best kind of cattle for that rangeland situation. You'll get a kick out of this, Commissioner Pratt, they haul over cattle from the Nancy Cummings Center in Salmon where those cows are really used to nice irrigated pasture and they're finding that they don't do as well out on Rock Creek Ranch. So that's been a good development to learn that. Any other questions about that?
No, thanks. Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
That's good because all of a sudden half of my screen now is black.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair, the last thing I just would mention is that we have two meetings remaining this fiscal year. One in May on the 20th and then our statutory required meeting in June. That has to take place before June 15th, that's on June 10th this year. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to sit back and and take questions or not.
I have a question, Terry.
There, Jared.
What, so what is the status of the budget? Did it go through? Was it signed? I mean, I kind of lost track of it because of the pause that they had to take in the Legislature. So where are we sitting there?
Yeah, so we sent out a notice prior to the Legislature going on recess. It was signed before recess. So, yeah, that was a big relief to all of us and we appear to be through with the Legislature or there through with us for this year anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, on that meeting schedule for FY 2021 showing May 20th and June 10th, yesterday we made comment that we might kind of keep the idea open that June 10th might be in person.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so everybody kind of keep that in mind that our June 10th meeting may be in person in Boise.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Eric. Glad you made it. Okay. That was all of your Administrators' Report, Ms. Merson.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
That was correct. Okay, that's the Reserving House Program Contract Update.
Hey, Delwyn, this is Chantel. Do you want to do a quick background on this or do you want me to?
Chantel, I'd really appreciate if you would provide a really quick background in the thumbnail.
Go ahead.
So, this is Chantel Chapel-Milton from the AG's Office. Thank you, Chairman. So we have been working to renegotiate the Master Crep Agreement with the United States and I think everyone's familiar with the Crep Program. But just as a quick background and Chuck's on the phone, he can step in and tell me if I'm misstating anything. So what this program is, it's an agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture to provide payments to water users in the Eastern Snake Plain Aquifer Area to incentivize them to retire acreage and not divert groundwater in order to increase water savings to the ESPA. And this program has been in place since 2006. We are in the process of renegotiating that master agreement that was entered into 2006. And in terms of a timeline, what we've worked out is what we need to have happen is have all of the contracts that were entered into under the old agreement. We have to have renewal contracts in place before October 1 as just part of the federal requirements because you have to have a new contract written up before the old contract expires in order for them to be able to renew. So we've been working on a timeline to get this agreement done to make that possible. And what we've worked out is we should be able to get this master agreement signed and going by July 1 so that Chuck and the folks at FSA can start working on processing those. I think from our end, my hope is that we can get this agreement before the Board at the June meeting. If we don't for some reason have it done by June 10, we'll have to have a special meeting sometime at the end of June just to discuss this agreement. But I think from where we're at now, I think we should be able to get that before the Board by June 10. There's really one major issue that's come to our attention as we've been going over this. And that's the issue of how the state has provided its required match funds, its required match for the program. Under the old agreement, the state was committed to providing 20% of the program's cost through match. But we could do that in a variety of ways and the way the state met that commitment was generally through in-kind match. So we claimed, you know, water monitoring efforts in the ESPA, we claimed staff time and resources from soil and water in administering the program. There was a federal regulation change, however, that now requires that half of the state's match under these Crep Agreements be direct payments made to producers. And this is something that came to my attention about a month ago. And it significantly changes the commitment the state has to make in order to continue Crep. Because as I said previously, we were meeting our match obligation almost 100% through in-kind match. So, and you know what, actually, if, I don't know if this is possible, Crystal, if you could let me share screen or if it's possible for you to bring up that estimate that Chuck put together on what that cost would be for us to make direct payments to producers to meet that. Do you guys have that handy, Delwyn?
I don't have a copy of that handy. Let me see if I can make it to where you can share screen.
Okay, I think that would be helpful because I just want the Board to understand the money that we're talking about with that because it is significant. We have to basically, right now, the way that the agreement is working out, the state has to pay 20% of the total program cost in match and the regulation requires that half of that be in direct payments. So we've gone through and estimated the total program costs.
We're working on getting you to be able to share your screen there, Chantel. I think we're making progress.
I think it'll be easier to see the numbers than to have them explain them to me, but does anyone have any questions about that so far? I guess while we're waiting.
Chantel, Kathy Romer, I do have a question for you. Now, when you said contracts expiring and you mentioned the date of 2006, is this a natural expiration of the agreement with USDA? Is it on a schedule like that or what's the background on that? That you have to re-up now or what exactly?
The main issue we have is the way that the original agreement is worded, it doesn't allow for re-enrollments.
Okay.
So in order to re-enroll new people, we have to renegotiate the Crep. And they want to renegotiate it anyway because there's been a lot of changes in federal law like this direct payment obligation.
Okay, so it's a matter of updating and being in sync with new changes and whatnot.
Right, and because it started in 2006 and there were 50 contracts, this is the year that the first batch of contracts is expiring. So we need to get this new Crep in place so we can re-enroll the first batch of contracts that are expiring. Is that, is there anything you want to add, Chuck? Are you on the phone?
Yeah, sure, you've done well on that, Chantel. I just might add that the emphasis on this is that 12,300 plus acres will be coming due to be re-enrolled. And that's quite significant when it comes to the water savings that represents. And so we have a lot of interest from the groundwater districts and other folks to want to get as many of those acres renewed as we can, plus the new contracts so we can get enrolled under those new payment rates that have been announced by FSA from last December.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, another question?
All right, Charlie.
So Chuck, when Mr. Tomiago was on once before, there was some discussion about, well, re-enrollment but also new Crep acres coming on board. And is what you talked about, the changes through FSA, a result of that? It's made it more attractive apparently, I guess, and so the water users are going to benefit even more so, correct?
Correct, because it's buried now on how Crep is computed. It's estimated through NASS data, the FSA is going to review these rental rates every year now. Whereas before, before it wasn't. And if you remember, some of the original contracts started out 15 years ago, those folks were getting paid $130 to $140 per acre each year for the program. And some counties may go up to as much as $288 per year for the length of the project. So it's now determined by county instead of by HUC. And the program boundary hasn't changed, but the way how the payments are computed internally for the producer has.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that. And I think we probably had covered that once before, but it was good to have a refresher, so thank you. Thanks, Chantel.
I got a question for Chuck. Is this, you think because they're trying to compete with commodity prices is the reason why they're trying to renegotiate the per-acre payments? Just because they're afraid that all these acres are not going to stay out of production, they're going to come back in?
Well, it was a little bit different than that. Internally, FSA has changed the way how the Crep agreements nationwide are handled. And that was handled, I don't know if that's a result from the 2018 Farm Bill decision or how FSA is doing that. But because the way how it's being implemented now requires FSA to go in and review those rental rates every year. And they are basing it completely off of NASS data, the National Egg Statistics Service data. And so back in 2016, I did a lot of analysis when we were trying to get the rental rates increased a little bit by $30 an acre at that time. And so I'm kind of familiar with that NASS data, what they're looking at. And because they had like 40, I'm estimating, made it about 40 Crep contracts nationwide, FSA does. They don't have the manpower to determine it by HUC and by county, they just went to by county to save the workload and their time because they're limited on staff on that as well. And so that helps expedite that and get the numbers out. Usually what they're going to target is have the new rental rates out every December of each year. So the producers will have time in the spring to decide whether to enroll or not, or at least they know what that rental rate will be. But the ones that, but it remind, just a reminder, the ones that enroll now, they will be set at that rate for the next 10-year period. And the next flush will be whatever rate that's being offered. And another thing we're looking at, because of the dollar amount that we're looking at, we're probably going to be switching over to a 10-year contract agreement instead of the 15 that we once had.
Okay, thanks, Chuck.
Chuck? Chuck?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Are the Crep acres, do they go against the county's 25% allocation?
As of now, they do again. There was an agreement that came through at one time, as you remember, a few years ago, that allowed us to not be under that criteria. But Jenny tells me over at FSA in Boise that that somehow inadvertently did not get reinstated at the national level. And so it is under that 25% reduction competing with the CRP acres. We have some counties out there that are loaded up that we can't contract in right now. But then we also, I understand, have a few CRP contracts expiring in October that may or may not renew. So we may have opportunities to enroll, but we just don't know yet at this time that it gets under that threshold.
In the ESA, isn't Power County the only one that's maxed out?
Did you say Power, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, Power and I believe at one time Bonneville and Portney were really close as well, if I remember right. I don't know where they're at right now at those levels.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Further questions for Chuck? There are none. Chantel, were you done?
Did you, can everyone see that chart that I've put up?
I can't, but go ahead.
I can.
Okay, so I'm going to just kind of summarize the situation. We found out basically the end of March that we needed to have money to make direct payments to participants in this program in order for us to re-sign this agreement with the United States. We do not have any money for fiscal year 2022. It was not in our budget request. We didn't, there was not information at that time, I think, that we knew we needed it in our budget request. So we ended up working with the Governor's Office and with the United States to figure out, do we need money for fiscal year 2022? We've worked it out to where we can make our first payment starting in fiscal year 2023. So the Governors, just so you guys are aware, the Governors' Office has been looped in on this and the Governors' Office, I believe, has already looped in leadership at the Legislature so they understand that this ask is coming because it is going to be a lot of money. We've gone through and tried to estimate the total cost of the program over its life. And honestly, that's a very difficult job because as Chuck was saying, the amount of money that the feds are going to pay is really dependent on where acres are enrolled. Because the market rate in like Minidoka County, I think, is the highest, is much higher than if they were enrolled in like, I don't know, Blaine County or somewhere else. So we've had a difficult time estimating, but what we've figured out is we think we would need about $11.5 million to meet that direct payment obligation. And I understand that is a significant amount of money given Soil and Water's annual budget per year. And if you look at this chart, we've estimated how much money we would need annually to meet our 10% obligation. The Governors' Office has been given this chart. So they understand that this money is going to be asked for in your budget request for fiscal year 2023. And I don't know, I understand, I've talked to Nate Fisher at the Governors' Office about whether they would like to do basically a big lump sum ask, us asking for $11.5 million all next year and they can put it in a dedicated fund and we can just draw it out or if they want us to ask for it annually and they haven't decided on that. They're working on other more pressing stuff right now. But just so you know, that is in the works. I think Rob, who's on the line, has also been looped in on this as well, if I'm right. Is that right, Delwyn?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't know, Rob, if you have anything to add on that specific issue.
At this point, nothing especially to add. We've alerted the motion makers who carried the budget for fiscal year 22. We're certainly understanding that this is something that's come up. So we're happy to look forward to working with you all and figure out how to make this move going forward. At this point, since it will be for fiscal year 23, not a whole lot of action we need to take in this current session.
So that was really the big hurdle that we've been dealing with in the last three weeks and I really appreciate Delwyn and Chuck have been spending a lot of time on this, getting these things together and trying to explain to everyone why we need that money. So I have nothing else to add on that issue beyond, once this issue gets, oh, I think the rest of the negotiations are going to be fairly smooth sailing.
A follow-up question, Chantel. From what I'm gathering here is that money is going to be allocated to our budget if everything goes as planned. And then we'll be responsible for mailing out the individual payments to producers?
Yes, Chairman Wright. So as you recall, Soil and Water got an additional position in their budget for the Crep Coordinator for next year. And given that, it seemed to make sense that Soil and Water would be handling the direct payments to producers. We do have quite a bit of flexibility with the USDA on how we manage those payments. The struggle is real in managing them in a way to where we are keeping along that 10% match line, not paying too much money because it's variable depending on, again, where the acres are enrolled. So I think what we're looking at now as being the best option is doing basically an additional annual rental payment so that we can kind of match closely what the feds are paying on each acre to stay really close to that 10% number so we're not overpaying. We haven't finalized that yet, but I think that's the route we're going. And then those checks would be mailed out by the Crep Coordinator from Soil and Water.
So it appears we'll have to keep pretty close ties with FSA. They'll have to give us a listing of producers and then They'll have to give us a listing of producers and the amount and all that one thing.
I think the way we have it set up now is they, the producer signs a contract with FSA called the CRP One Contract.
Right.
And I believe would be that that contract would go to Soil and Water. And on it should have, this is how much we're making, we're paying per acre, the market rate per acre we're paying on this contract. And what we're working on, and I think the number that Delwyn, Chuck and I have been throwing around is if the state pays thirteen percent of that, we're pretty close to covering ten percent of the total program costs. Because the way the feds calculate total program costs, they include our contribution in that, which is really funky. So if that makes sense, like the more in-kind we claim, the more the program cost is, so the more money we would owe, right? So we are just having to be very careful that we are sticking very close to that twenty percent so we have enough money. And I think talking to Chuck and Delwyn, it seems like if we pay thirteen percent of the rental payment they're paying, that kind of seems to be that, that magic number that tracks that pretty close. So that's what we're looking at doing now. You're right, we'll have to coordinate with the feds. The other thing we're looking at doing is to make contract administration easier is paying in arrears. Meaning we'll pay, we won't start making annual payments until twelve months after someone signs an agreement. The way the feds, it is they pay theirs in arrear October of every year.
That's right.
We'll do the same thing. And that's how we're going to be able to have, start signing these re-enrollment contracts that we're signing in fiscal year 2022, but our first payment won't be until fiscal year 2023. And that's also helpful too. So if someone is not in compliance, let's say, and their contract is terminated, we would be able to do that before and then just stop making payments instead of a situation where we've already paid someone and now we have to try to get the money back because that's, that's just more work for someone to do. So that's what we're at right now. Let me know if I'm being too, too detailed about this. This is basically what I've been working on for the past three weeks. So I'm really in the, in the, sometimes cannot see the forest for the trees on it, if you know what I mean.
Good chair, if I could interrupt for a tree. Curtis Elke is waiting to be admitted to the meeting and we made Chantel host. So Chantel, you have to let him in. On your controls, wherever you have them. She's muted. You're muted now.
I think I just admitted Curtis to the call.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. I see him. So you're good.
You can pass the controls back if, if no one wants me, if I can take this chart off the screen too. I can stop sharing and then you can take over again, Crystal. Does that make sense?
Yes, Chuck has something to say real quick, though, I think.
And I have one more question for Chuck. So go ahead, Chuck.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. I have one more thought. This is a work in progress, this worksheet is. Estimates like Chantel was saying that Chantel and I worked out. This also includes a potential of whatever the groundwater districts agree to make payments to or direct credits for on some of those water rights and payments for, for those people that want to enroll. So we may have to monitor that as well in the reports that we send back to FSA of how much those were in the form of direct payments. And so it's not just what we disperse out, but it's also what the groundwater districts decide to pay potentially as well. Now, that may change, but that's kind of what we're looking at at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And Chantel may have mentioned it, but we do have a timeline. We're looking at getting this new agreement signed by the US and the state by July 1st. And in the meantime, Chuck, Chantel and myself are meeting on a weekly basis via Zoom with the FSA lead fellow from Washington DC and state IDWR and FSA attorneys representative as well. So we're, we're working to make progress towards getting this thing done.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I had one more question for Chuck.
Go ahead.
What, and maybe you've already answered this, but I just missed it. What has been the trend over the last, well, since 2006, since this has been implemented? What's the trend in acres, new acres every year coming on board? I mean, are you, is it, is it a significant amount or is it kind of a, is it an up and down? Or how does that work?
Well, it was, it was really up, then it swayed way down, and then it kind of leveled off to a static plus or minus thousand acres throughout the rest of the period up to this point in time. Primarily because of the value of the ground and the rental rates that escalated so much in the Magic Valley, dairies, high-value crops, those type of things. There were actually some contracts that got bought out early, paying the termination fees, liquidated damages and so forth. So it resulted, we were up as high as close to twenty-four thousand acres enrollment. And now throughout the years, it's leveled off, but we have revisions that we take care of. We're down to around eighteen thousand three hundred right now. And this latest rental rate announcement was quite a jump in some of these counties. And so we believe that that might be enough to trip other folks that may want to jump on. Plus, any contract that gets enrolled now, they'll be able to use the, the amount that they're curtailing for their credits for the Surface Water Coalition Agreement that they're under, that twelve and a half percent reduction that they, they need to meet. So that's another attraction. We think we may see some of the bigger ones who will max out on their fifty thousand payment limit early opt to use such strategies as maybe handgun removals and more of their corners to add those acres in, but still be a part of the CREP program.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional information? Are we ready to move on then? Yes, we are. Mr. Curtis Elke, are you with us?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
About a word or two?
All right. Well, good morning, everyone. It's always good to see your bright faces and have the opportunity to come in front of you and give you an NRCS update report. So, you know, with the new administration, I'll just start with that, the new administration. And we're, we're getting new guidance, new direction on prioritization of what we want to be focusing on, need to be focusing on. So I thought it'd be probably good for me to share with you what I'm hearing from the departmental level and what our priorities are being dictated, I guess, down to us as an agency as well. Number one is, is equity and inclusion. And that, that is number one priority to this administration. And that, and that, you may ask, well, what does that mean? And well, in our world, that means enrollment and access barriers, identifying some of the potential barriers and underserved communities and individuals that they face in enrolling for some of our program benefits and such. So we're looking, taking a deeper dive into that and, and trying to identify, do we have some underserved communities out here in our, in our state that we don't even know about? So we're taking a deeper dive into that to figure out that. Also our contracting and there's also contracting barriers. And what are they? What's prohibiting people from participating in some of our programs? Is it some of the streamlining and not understanding our programs? Maybe it's a language barrier as well. So we've started to, I guess, create other, you know, forms of fact sheets and documents and applications and that in various languages as well. So, so we're, we're looking at that in a greater, greater depth. Secondly is urban agriculture. And, you know, this is something that, that I've sensed, I guess, since I've been here in Idaho for six years now. You've got people that support it and you have people that don't. Urban agriculture. And I think the people that don't just don't understand urban agriculture, maybe to the extent that it, that it can provide some definite benefits. So I'm working on an agreement right now with Farmland Trust for an additional focus of opportunities on how and where we invest in urban agriculture across the state. And this is where I need your help too, in helping me identify, I mean, in, in your vision and, and such, what do you see urban agriculture being, I guess, futuristic, futuristically here in Idaho and the, the how, the where, you know, type of question I have in my mind for Idaho. I think there's incredible opportunities to do more with the influx of people that are moving in, buying up small acreages. I think there's huge opportunity to work with these people and to educate some of them people with what agriculture really could look like. And I know we still have desert, food deserts out there within the state too, that we want to address and identify and help out. And this is where a high tunnel or other things, you know, could come into play in providing a better, a more reliable food source, I guess, for communities out there. Thirdly is, is climate smart agriculture. And that's, that's a a term you're going to hear for quite some time. And nobody does it better than we do. And I say we, I mean, like Team Idaho, talking about the commission, Soil and Water Conservation Districts, NRCS, FSA, we, we're, we're all doing it and have doing it for eighty-plus years. And thankfully, the deputy under secretary Gloria Montano, and she has been quoted in saying that nobody does it better than us. So that's, that's great that we have the support of our national leadership. Robert Bonney, some of you may know who he is as well. I had the opportunity to visit with him too, and he's, he greatly supports all of our work and what we're doing and all that. I've invited him to Idaho as well, along with Gloria Montano of Idaho to come in and meet us and give us the opportunity to show you, you know, some of the great conservation that's being implemented on the ground. So also I want to let you know that we're getting into the reinvigorating, reinvigoration of conservation planning. Where we're looking at our current conservation planning procedures and, and the overall, what does a plan look like? What, and to, for the landowner, to the landowner, is it valuable? Is it all valuable? Is it parts of it that are more valuable than others? And instead of a four-pound plan, we're trying to get it down to a quarter-pound plan in, in my mind. I'm putting poundage on it. But, you know, I just, there's all that fluff sometimes in there. It becomes our plan rather than the customer's plan. So we're working on reinvigorating that plan. In fact, I have a call here at eleven o'clock this morning, so I'm going to have to drop off here fairly soon after I'm done and get it on the, the planning committee to talk about that. Other than that, we continue to hire, and I'm really thankful for that. We're, we're bringing on a lot of entry-level type positions. And if there are, if there is anybody out there in the community that you know that would be interested in working for NRCS at an entry level, we're looking for planners. So soil conservationists, planners, engineers, you know, entry-level type engineers right out of, right out of school or, or recent grad, you know, kind of stuff as well. So looking at bringing on twenty-six additional direct hire authority entry-level positions. And also we're looking at other positions within our state that we've needed for some time and haven't been able to hire, but now are because there's, there's no staffing caps anymore that's been imposed on us like, like previously. And now everything is dictated according to my budget. Whatever I can afford is what I can hire. And so I'm, I'm grateful for that. We, NRCS, no matter how many people we hire, we still can't do it alone. We, we need the partners. We need you to help us. And we want to help you. We want to work together with the commission, with Soil and Water Conservation Districts in getting conservation on the ground in the very best, efficient, effective way possible. So with that, Mr. Chairman, you know, there is one more mention I should say, you know, the, I want to thank you all for the local-led work group process too. It's really working well. We're starting to see some, some really good things coming out of the local work groups. And because of it, we've had an increase in applications, a very large increase in applications for equip, to the, to the point that I've had to ask for an additional ten point eight million dollars in additional equip funding this year. I'm not sure yet how much I'm going to receive of that request in ten point eight million dollars in equip. But that will bring us over twenty-five million dollars in equip alone for Idaho. We have fifteen million right now in our budget to put on the ground. But an extra ten point eight million will, will do a lot of great things out there on the ground. So everybody's working hard in getting the planning done and, and getting prepped in case this money does come that we can go into contract with, with some producers as well. And then in addition to that, we've asked for additional six million dollars in ASAP. That's the Agriculture Conservation Easement Program. We've had an influx in interest in easements here in Idaho as well. We had seven new applications that came in this, just this year that want, that want funding. And so we're pleased to see that too, the additional interest in easements. So see if there's anything else. I guess I'll just close there, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, and I'm always interested in feedback from you all too. You know, how are we doing? How am I doing as your, as your state conservationist? I want to be your best leader possible, you know, that I can here for you and for others here in the state. And so I'm always open to any suggestions, any, any feedback. You're my customer. So what, what can I do? What, what can we do, NRCS Idaho, to assist the commission in the very best way possible? And appreciate you all. And I'll, I'll end it there.
I got a, I got a comment, Curtis.
Yes, sir.
I just, I just want to make sure that with the new administration coming in and the focus being back on the climate, and I'm trying to be diplomatic here with my words. I want to make sure that you are very, very aggressive in your describing farming in general and how we are the stewards of the land and how we take care of the land and we have for hundreds of years in this country. And make sure that the emphasis is on, we are on top of the ball as far as what needs to be done and what's been taking place. I, this, this is an issue that makes the hair on the back of my neck stand up because it's insulting to me. And I just want to make sure that people that are in positions like yours are very vocal and not afraid to rock the boat if need be. And because I'm going to be standing right behind you all the way, as long as you have, you know, taken the lead and making sure that these people are educated and what really takes place. I get these people that are coming out of the cities that have no idea what we do and always question why we do what we do. It's just, it's frustrating to me. I just want to make sure that the word is getting out in the appropriate manner. So.
I greatly appreciate that comment. And like I said earlier in my presentation, nobody does it better than we do and has been doing. We have a hundred and fifty-seven conservation practices that get implemented here in Idaho. We've been doing it for eighty-six years, NRCS. And with the help of the Soil and Water Conservation Districts and you, we've been getting it done. So I, and no, probably nobody knows me better than Terri Merson, that I'm not afraid to speak up. And, and I think she knows that. And she knows that. So anyway, if, you know, if, if something needs to be said, I'm going to say it, but it's really good to hear that you guys have my back.
Well, I would just like to add too, pardon me, Kathy Romer here. I appreciate Eric's comment and just as a reminder. I appreciate Eric's comment and just as a reminder to Curtis as well, equity, the new buzzword cuts both ways.
Yep, sure does.
So this is Wendy, I, I need to speak up too. Uh, you know, that term hair on the back of your neck stand up. Eric, that's what I was gonna say because you say something like equity, inclusion, urban ag and climate friendly agriculture. And I bet the supervisors across our state. Who I'm guessing are, are largely older, white, traditional men. Uh, that's the reaction they're gonna have. And what I need to say is we either look at this as an opportunity or we become obsolete. And frankly, we're about to blow away down here in southeast Idaho. And so, uh. We need to do something about wind erosion on cropland. Uh, it's just gonna happen and I, I, I have a hard time standing up and defending the current, uh. The pro, uh, current farming methods, I'm sorry, I just, it's time.
Yeah, so I just got off of a, a, a call this morning with some of my staff out in eastern Idaho. Where there's a lot of wind erosion, it bothers the heck out of me. It really, really does. It says, this isn't nineteen thirty anymore, come on guys. Today, today is Hugh Hem and Bennett's birthday, he's a hundred and forty years old today.
Really?
It is. And, and so I'm like, come on guys, you know, we can do better, we need to do better. The challenge that we have is that, I won't say a majority, but some of the people that. Are kind of taking a blind eye, I guess, to wind erosion and it's just more, more so about production. Are out of the farm bill program, are not program farm, farm bill program participants. So it really handcuffs us NRCS in, in, uh, and FSA. In, uh, having penalties, you know, for and enforcing the, the need for wind erosion conservation practices. It just behooves me that a landowner would just watch his land or her land just blow away. Um, and, and accept that. It just, I just don't understand the why. So we, we continue to try to educate, to try to influence, um, all these people out there. But here is where we need the help of the soil and water conservation districts and, and the, and the commission, especially the districts. Is we, I, I can't really enforce and, and, uh, uh, get too involved with people that are not. Farm bill program participants. But they can, so more conservation districts can reach out to other landowners. Um, and these people directly and say, come on Charlie, you know, what's, what's going on here? Uh, we, let us help you, you know, it's something that, that you need, be a listening ear, wha- whatever it be. And there's just a few bad players out there that are ruining it for everybody else, uh, it seems like, but it's still an issue. And it's a big issue, uh, in eastern Idaho in particular. We have, you know, some ephemeral gully erosion going on in the Palouse area too, that still an issue, but we're addressing it. And, uh, I feel like we're, we're, we're a little bit more on top of that. But we're not out in the eastern part of Idaho. We still have road closures going on, we still have all that kind of stuff where we have. And, and I kind of wonder, I mean, how much topsoil do we have left out in them neck of the woods? But, um, I, I, I can assure you Wendy, that it has my attention and, and I'm not happy, um, with it. I know Norm and I, we've had in-depth conversations on this too, and he's not happy either. Uh, about that in his backyard going on. So we, we need to do something about it, but we need to really work, pull the team together and figure out, okay. What's, what's our strategy? What's our attack? How can we influence some of these landowners that are just doing what they want to do? And, and, you know, I had reports of a landowner that's adjacent to, I won't mention names, but. Jason too, a, a landlord that's just letting his, his soil blow away. He had an inch of soil in his house. From all the, the wind erosion going on in and around him. Now that, that is ridiculous and that shouldn't be happening here. So there's, I, there's, there's help that, that can be provided. And there's, there's very simple solutions in some ways where instead of planting spring wheat. Plant witch wheat, um, right after a potato crop or whatever crop that is. I'm also happy to say that I'm working with Simplot on a potential MOU. And an agreement with, with Simplot in on no till potatoes. And the, we're gonna call it the potato project here in Idaho. And I think there's an opportunity to maybe, uh, for that to catch on. It's been, uh, utilized in, in Manitoba and very successful up there in Manitoba. Uh, and also in Colorado. Um, uh, Brendan Rocky, uh, has, has done some of that, uh, potato research and, uh, no till potatoes and, and that. So I know it can be done, um, it's just a, a matter of getting it here in Idaho.
I just, I got one more comment, Mr. Chairman, to Curtis. I just want to remind you though, no till is great, no till fits where it fits. And you gotta remember some of the reasons some of these guys are having to go back to old school conventional tillage. You become so reliant on chemicals to do your farming and cover crops work where cover crops work. They don't always work in this right, in the same places. So I just, I, I understand where you're coming from. I just want to remind you, the reality of it all is we have, we, we have this big push. For trying to solve problems where there's not in, in some of the public sectors nowadays. And, you know, we don't have a new active ingredient. We haven't had a new active ingredient for over twenty years in our industry. As far as chemical base and being able to attack different species that are resistant. And this, this push for no till has, has kind of painted ourselves into a corner. And I saw it coming twenty-five years ago with the introduction of the rounder pretty crops. So we, there, there has to be a fit, you know, and it, and it's, it, it, it goes around and it's dependent on area. You can't paint with a broad brush, just gotta remember that, keep that in.
Oh, I do Eric, and I appreciate you bringing that up as well. You know, we, we live in a world of extremities right now. It seems like there's way left or way right, you know, kind of, and they, we don't want to be either or. We, we want to be the moderate in conservation. It's not a one size fits all by no means. We don't want to push things, we don't want to force people into doing something. We want to give them options to consider because yeah, not, cover crop doesn't work for everyone. No till doesn't work for everyone, but it, it could work in, in some places that it's not currently being used. Uh, so we are a volunteer agency, we're gonna continue to be a voluntary, a conservation agency and giving, providing options.
Thank you Curtis.
You're welcome.
Thanks Wendy for bringing it up again. Okay, uh, then with that, uh, moving on to item number six. It looks like Terry Hobel Heinrich is up.
Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, this is Chantel, I am still not host again, so I can't change the share screen.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm.
I have to do something to make you host, I thought I stopped sharing, right?
Yes, you have to make me host again.
Okay, how do I, do I, how do I do that?
So if you hover over, um, Delwin, since that's our screen and there's a little three dots. Um, there should be an option when you click on that dropdown menu to make me the host.
I think I just did it.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep, thanks. We'll talk more.
All right, I'm sure of it.
Chairman Wright, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead Terry.
Okay, thank you. So here to this, uh, conservation range land development program update. Um, first off, uh, update as far as with marketing, um, hasn't been a lot of activity. With COVID with a lot of the trade shows and conferences were canceled this past year or held online. Um, do expect those to, uh, resume this next winter, at least I would, we hope so. Um, we don't know what, what the future holds there, but, uh. As far as with print advertising, we're coming up on the time period where we typically renew all print ads. Uh, with Ag Proud is that new, um, relatively new publication, free publication in southern Idaho. Uh, Farm Bureau is statewide and here not Farm and Ranch, uh, publication is, is eastern Idaho. So, uh, be renewing that. Um, that, that's, that's about it as far as updates on marketing, uh, as far as the loan activity. Excuse me, um, we have seventeen loan inquiries to date for the fiscal year. Um, that's down from past years, um, a fair amount. We did have nine applications though to date, uh, I have one that's in process, working on right now. We have approved six loans, um, the total three hundred forty-three thousand. Um, several of those loans, uh, are in the midst of, will be dispersing, uh, this spring. Working on those right now, uh, two loans have been denied for that fiscal year. Uh, that, that's the loan activity to date, um, we have fifty-five loans in the portfolio, just under two million dollars. Um, in, in, um, principal balances, uh, we have no delinquent, delinquent loans at this time. Current, as far as with the, uh, uh, RCRDP and administrative rule. We, we are still waiting for the legislature to approve our overall rule. Um, that typically happens that once they, um, if, if they do it, then when they adjourn or right before they adjourn. Um, so we will wait to see what happens with that. And then the other thing, I just wanted to remind everyone is that, um, according to the schedule. But you probably know they've gone on a rotational schedule for reviewing rules. And, um, we are scheduled for, uh, with the calendar year two thousand twenty-three. When they even, um, start that process again, don't really know what, what, what that will look like. But we've got a couple of years out, but we start that. Uh, as far as with the loan program, um, we've been working with commissioners Pratt and Olson. That's, uh, information to them, uh, had, um, a couple of conversations, uh, discussions about the information that's provided. Uh, most of this is background information, loan history, legislation, rules. And then I've been working up some, uh, just some statistics or distribution, uh, numbers on the loans. Kind of the activity that's been going on and then that has prompted, uh, our questions. And I'm gathering more information about that, uh, continuing to analyze. And then, uh, we'll be getting back to the commissioners, uh, with additional information, um, and, and I'm sure more discussion out of that. Um, our plan is to have, um, a report on, uh, the next commission meeting in May. Uh, and the idea that hopefully we present some solutions, some potential solutions, I should say, or, or, uh. Presumably there would be a discussion about what we found and, and, uh, going forward, so. Um, as far as with interest rates, as you know, we reduced those a quarter point last year, um, in August. Um, of course there hasn't been, we have, we're seeing change in that as well. But that's, that's all I had with the loan program. Um, did anyone have any question or comments? Or obviously, uh, commissioners, Pratt and Olson might, um, might, will they have some comments if there's some comments?
And say, add comments?
Yeah, this is Wendy, I'll just weigh in and, uh, say that it's, it's kind of, uh. As you collect information, you're forming these questions and refining these questions and, and that's the. That's where we need to head with this is, you know, i- is there a need? Uh, is there, are, are rates and our terms competitive enough? Um, is it, does it have to do with marketing and outreach? Uh, what, you know, where's our traffic coming from? What's the, what's the knowledge level of the supervisors out in the districts? Um, so it's, it's complex, but it's, it's a task that, uh. That we're anxious to take on. It's, I just want to reassure you that the, the seven million dollars, you know, it's, uh, it's serious stuff that we want to. We want to put that money to, to good work, so, uh. We just need some more time and some input. I think it, if, once we have these, these questions really formed and, um. And informed, then I think getting another set of eyes, of professional eyes on it would be good. We have some names in mind of either current, uh. Um, lenders or retired lenders, uh, Representative Youngblood said he would be happy when the session's over to. To look at some figures and so we'll follow up on that. Thanks Terry.
Thanks Wendy. Okay, uh, moving on then, that's completed. Well, someone else has questions or comments? Our next item is item number eight, Mr. Trapp's District Support Services Update.
Thank you Chair, Chairman Wright and commissioners. The first item I want to touch on in my district support services update this morning. Is the district trustee and benefits outreach effort update. As you guys are aware, we have, uh, since February, staff have been participating in district meetings. To ask their boards for direction regarding which, if any changes, they would like to see made to the district allocation statute and rule. As of April eighth, when I drafted this memo, staff had met with forty-seven districts and twenty-nine had acted formally. To recommend specific changes to the way funds are allocated to districts. An additional thirteen districts at that time had indicated that they intended to put the question to a vote during their April meetings. Results of the actions taken by districts as of April eighth are shown in the following table. And this is fairly current, the information in this table, since I put this together, an additional three districts submitted. Formal vote results to me and, and so I have updated the table a little bit. I'll note those updates as I go through the table. The, uh, the top vote getter so far has been equal distribution of all the funds appropriated to, to districts. Uh, and fourteen of the districts as of today, a total of thirty, I think I mentioned thirty-two districts. Have voted formally and, and still that number that voted in support of equal distribution is still hanging at fourteen. Ten districts voted as their preferred suggestion to reduce the cap on them, on the amount of match. And one district could receive in any one year. Ten of those voted for that, uh, five districts voted to increase the base. And suggestions varied from ten thousand dollars, uh, to twenty thousand dollars with. Four districts did not specify what they thought the base allocation should be increased to, but they were in favor of increasing the base. Two have voted for, uh, maintaining the status quo. And, uh, three have voted for the comprehensive restructure, which involves getting. The legislature to appropriate a total of two and a half million dollars in trusting benefits ASAP. And dividing that equally amongst the fifty districts. And the second element of that comprehensive restructure would be to. Transfer five million of our RCRDP loan funds into an equal access, uh, fund where the districts could use to leverage grant applications. So we have three votes in favor of that, uh, comprehensive restructure. Uh, one district formally voted not to vote on which suggestion they preferred. And, uh, and as of today, one district has voted for some kind of a tier-based approach. To, uh, allocating out match funding. So either a performance-based or some other, some other yet to be determined tier approach. Where district could qualify for greater or lesser percentages of, of match than following the, the process that we currently have in place. Uh, going on with the, is there any questions on that table or the information presented there at this time?
Just a comment, Delwin, it appears to me as what our preliminary. Just a comment, Delwood. It appears to me as what our preliminary information is showing, there's not gonna be a great big group that's gonna go one way. Looks like to me this is gonna be a minefield.
It does, doesn't it?
Yes, because if we're gonna be stuck in putting together a suggestion here, it's not gonna be very much in the majority.
That's sure what it's looking like, and I don't expect to see that majority that you're speaking of that would give us a mandate to go forward with changes to the legislation with the districts that have yet to vote, or that may yet vote. That's probably an unlikely scenario.
Wow. Not gonna be good.
Mr. Chair, we got a comment from a supervisor up north who was concerned about that very matter. And, and what was explained to him was that the state agency legislative process has a timeline that doesn't necessarily match the ISCD district timeline, which is, they discussed it in the spring, they discussed it in the fall, and then they have the annual conference in November where they decide what, what to proceed with. So we never started this with the intent that, that we were going to solve the, the issue of what to do about district allocations. Only that we were gonna give all fifty districts an opportunity to weigh in and see if there was a consensus. I think the value in this process is to, to realize districts are still divided and it may not be appropriate for state agency legislation at this point.
That might be really a true statement.
Could we, I gotta, I gotta question. Could we, you know, say at the fifteenth of May, you've received all the comments for this basically open question on changing allocations. What if you top three and re-present it under the districts and then just, I mean, if, if that's the direction they want us to go, take the top three, resubmit it, tell them that they have a deadline by the, by the June meeting, and then we take the top one and if they wanna have us, if they wanna have it done, I mean, I, I understand we've really opened up Pandora's box here, which I kind of figured was gonna happen when we started down this road. But when you have districts that are screaming for us to do something, and it seems like they're a very vocal minority, you got other districts that, that just go along, and then you got other districts that are, you know, absolutely resistant to any kind of change. What are we supposed to do here? That's, that's my other question.
Mr. Chair, I think that that, that was designed into the process. We were hoping that everybody would vote by the end of this month so that in April, we could go back out with that list and do precisely that. Probably what we'll have to do is have a vote in early May or some kind of a three things sent out to the districts in early May, and then at your May meeting, you'll be able to consider, is it worth going forward or should we not pursue it? So that is built into it. This isn't the last that districts are gonna hear about what they want. Or tell us.
And our effort, once we have here in the next day or two, it probably won't be the sixteenth, but by early next week, I'll get out this table, the updated table and all the information to districts and, and let them know that as we told them in February and March and the April meetings that we attended, we do, it is our intent to move forward with what in the direction that districts want us to move, but we're, we'll, and it'll be obvious here that we don't have a consensus. We'll say, are you in favor of us moving forward with equal distribution, pushing for legislation? And, and if we received a majority of positive responses from districts saying, yes, we want you to move forward with that, then that will be presented to your board in, in May and, and we will just be able to make it under the wire to, to get the legislative changes made, if that's the direction they want us to go. I would be surprised if that's the direction they want us to go, and I don't think that it's, I mean, it's, it's perfectly valid and it's okay with me that different districts have a different perspective on which would be the ideal solution or the ideal way to distribute trustee and benefits funds. I'm not surprised that there isn't unanimous consent on one option or the other. But I think the real value of this, when you tie this in with our joint meeting with ISCD in February, where ISCD and us made what sounded to me like mutual commitments to working together with districts to move forward, to craft some kind of legislative changes and would work for districts and work for the whole partnership next year. This is really valuable information to help inform that kind of a discussion. If that's, if that's, if that's as as much as we're able to do with this information, I see it as a win already, so. I don't know. What do you, what do you think, Terry?
Yeah, I, I think that this is just one option for districts to consider going through state agency legislation. Obviously, the, the one that, that was worked last year, the ISCD process, that's also an option that can be followed if, if districts decide they don't want to be rushed.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of interest in change, and it was really interesting in February when Bill Loretta, myself and George and other field staff helped us, met with those districts. We heard initially quite a lot of, of people responding, supervisors responding, well, if it's not broke, let's not fix it and let's just stick with the status quo. However, when it came to actually casting votes on it, it's really interesting that, that as of right now, what, only two have actually voted for the status quo. So that tells me there really is, once they look at the different options and start giving it thoughtful consideration, there is a lot of interest in change, and we just need to, to make sure that, that we keep listening to what the districts are telling us and going back to them for the information and clarity we need so that when we do make a move, whether it's as agency-initiated legislation or whether it's legislation that comes up from the districts through ISCD, that, that's legislation that the districts are actually interested in seeing affected, so.
Good. More to come.
Yeah. More to come. Let me, I think we've probably covered that adequately unless there's any further questions on it. The next thing I wanted to hit really quick was our Eastern Idaho Engineer Hiring Update. That position announcement closes
tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It closes tomorrow and we're holding it, two applicants on that. And we're just believing that one of them's gonna be a total mind-blowing rock star and the perfect fit for our position and our agency and our district needs. If not, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but Crystals and Rachel have been working with our subject matter expert that will be reviewing these just as quickly as, as that announcement closes and moving forward with into the interview process. We also have a Water Quality Resource Conservationist position, of course, that opened up in Coeur d'Alene when, when Brad left us, and that announcement closes Friday, February twenty-third, and to date we have received eleven applicants for that position, so.
Well, back up. What's, when's it close? You said Friday, February twenty-third.
Friday, April twenty-third. My bad. A week from tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, and thanks for asking me to clarify that, and eleven applicants received so far.
Great.
We have also, the next topic or thing I wanted to hit on was the distribution of withheld trustee and benefit funds. Terry has, has inquired of the Governor's Office when we might be free to distribute those funds that we're holding back. And to date, we have not received word on when that might be happening, and we're looking forward, as districts are, to, hello Nate? Yours must have been burning, huh?
Hi, Delwood. No, it was good timing. I and Mr. Chairman, I hope I have some opportunity to address the board. I had been talking to our Budget Chief Alex, and thanks for sending the follow-up on that. At this time, there are no plans for additional holdbacks, and I apologize for not communicating that sooner, so I think that from our perspective, if and when the Commission's ready to release those funds, we do not anticipate any future holdbacks between now and the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you. That's good news.
Mr. Chairman, let me then confirm with Nate that we'll be processing those payments next, first part of next week, if there's absolutely no chance that there could be a holdback or rescission.
Great. That's the, the communication that I've got now, Terry, and should I hear anything? Otherwise, I'll, I'll let you know as soon as possible, but.
Thank you. Yeah. You wanna put it in blood in an email or something?
That is such exciting news. I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you, Nate. That was excellent timing.
Okay.
Wow, that's awesome. Okay. So the recommended action was that your board authorized staff to begin drafting revisions to the District Allocation Statute and Rule that reflect changes desired by districts with the stipulation that the draft will be subject to revision based on feedback received from districts prior to May fifteenth. I'm not sure that that's actually necessary. At this point, we don't have enough of a consensus to know what to begin drafting, so. I suggest that this just be for information only and we'll revisit in May.
Sounds good. I don't think we're ready to make any fantastic votes on any subject yet. Okay, thank you, Delwood.
Thank you.
That puts us down to minutes of our March eighteenth meeting. Does anybody have any questions concerning that? If not, I will accept the motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion, Commissioner Romer.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Further motion? Do I have any nays? Hearing none, motion passed. Okay, puts us down to financial reports. Ms. Benzit.
My skills are getting smoother.
Okay, so start with the, the memo. First bullet point there, the, the Financial Detail and Fund Summary, your today reports for March of two thousand twenty-one are enclosed, and we'll go ahead and go out over those as soon as I'm done going through the memorandum here. The budget blueprint, since our budget, the FY twenty-two budget was signed into law by Governor Little on March nineteenth, we did receive the additional two hundred thousand dollars in trustee and benefit funds as well as funding for the credit manager that Delwood discussed earlier, or in Terry. So maintaining our seventeen point seven five FTT count. So the budget blueprint, I'll go ahead and present that at the next meeting in May. And on March thirtieth, we received guidance for implementing both the FY twenty-one and the FY twenty-two CEC distributions. So we are currently working right now to make sure all the employees' evaluations are up to date and on file. Those need to be on file and current within the last twelve months in order for them to get their raises, so we are currently working on that as well. We've also hired for the temporary part-time office clerk, Amanda Furman. She's here with us. Personally, I'm gonna rotate the camera so Amanda can say hi. So she started with us this, this week, it was a Monday, I think, and is already helping a lot with getting our, our records caught up and, and she's gone through the records retention requirements, and she's making a lot of progress already and hopefully is out, so. I know Crystal and I are both very happy about that.
Question, Rachel. How long is her temporary position scheduled to last?
It'll be through June tenth.
Right.
Because we have to, that's a hard end date because we have to have all her wages paid out by the end of this fiscal year, so. So we only have her till June tenth, but we're gonna love her while she's here.
Yeah. I don't like it.
Yeah. Commissioner honorariums. We, of course, are in good standing with reduced travel. We've spent overall fifty-seven percent of the amounts allocated for fiscal year twenty-one. Are there any questions on any of these items? All right. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the financial detail financial report for March thirty-first twenty twenty-one. It's, to be honest, a pretty uneventful month. We'll start with the top left. The top left of the spreadsheet here, under Personnel Expenditures for General Fund. We've expended about seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, which is about sixty-seven percent of the amount we had allocated for General Fund Personnel Expenditures. Over to operating expenses, we are sitting at having spent about sixty-three percent. And I know I've brought this up before, we've been extremely very fiscally conservative in our expenditures, and now since the fiscal year is winding down, we are reviewing a list of things that we've put off purchasing and kind of selecting things that we may need to maybe able to get up to date with, with some of these funds we have left over. We have two laptops we do need to replace. We didn't, we weren't able to request funding for replacing our laptops for FY twenty-two. Well, just this last week, we had one of our laptops break. ITS hasn't been able to revive it, and we have another one on the way out. So we've already received quotes to replace those two laptops. Our laptops are aged now pretty well. What were they, Crystal? About seven years?
Estimated, yeah.
Estimated about seven years old, so hopefully for FY twenty-three, we'll be able to replace the rest of them. Are there any questions on personnel or operating expenditures in General Fund? All right, moving on. As Delwood mentioned, the trustee and benefits, the rest of those distributions haven't been sent out yet. But I guess we'll be doing that next week.
Mr. Chair, if I could just insert, we haven't updated your, this table from your action of last month. We're no longer doing the capacity building. We've taken that fifty thousand and put it up with the match thing, so that, next month, you'll see a correction in that.
Okay.
Okay, then cash balances for General Fund. We did receive one more restitution payment, so the total received to date has increased slightly there. Any questions on General Fund?
But just a point, whoever makes the motion to approve this should make it to approve as presented with the correction that the fifty thousand in trustee and benefits to capacity goes to the match fund. And then we don't have to deal with it next month. We'll just amend it in the motion.
So, so Crystal, that's gonna zero out the trustee and benefits, is that right?
I think she means you.
Yeah.
It's because my name is down there.
Sorry, it's Rachel. Kind of like Crystal's name better, but you know. Well, that's just gonna be shifted then. I'll, I'll talk with Terry how you want me to change this around, but. Well, I'm, I'm just saying, are we gonna that fund, trustee and benefit fund, will, will all go out, is that right? Correct. Yes, yes. Sorry, I misunderstood your question. Yeah. Yeah, that'll be completely distributed then.
It's, the clarification is that a hundred and sixteen thousand of it goes to the local match instead of that breakdown of sixty-six and fifty. We just failed to reflect your action last month on this, and I didn't catch it yesterday. And when we did our review, the chair didn't either. Not to throw you under the bus.
Fine.
Testing you guys.
Yeah.
Dylan with them. All right, enough fun. On the, the federal fund, 0348, under the federal grants, I did have to make another tweak on the final submittal for that, but we are still in shape to receive that and get that account cleared out by the end of the month. Professional services, no change from last month. Moved down to RCRDP, loan administration. Personnel expenditures are similar to general fund at about 67% expended for personnel. Operating expenditures are sitting at 40% of what was allocated. Cash balances. Received to date is at 626,000. And there hasn't been any activity in paid out loans since the last month's meeting. Any questions so far? Okay, and the next one's really easy, the DQ revolving loan, no changes since last month. So if there are any questions, we can move on to the financial summary.
Go ahead.
Right, under general fund personnel funds, the expenditures carrying through from the prior spreadsheet there at 788,000 expended. Our remaining balance is holding fairly steady at the 68,000 dollars, and that's taking into account the turnover with the vacant positions and also the hire of Amanda. So things just kind of averaged out to still remain at about 68,000 remaining. The RCRDP personnel funds, again, we have approximately $10,000 remaining after the projected expenditures for the rest of the fiscal year. Any questions on personnel? Okay, operating funds. After the projected expenditures, we still have our good, about $20,000 remaining. Professional services unchanged from last month. RCRDP operating fund expenditures, after projected, we still have about 63,000 remaining. And the revolving loan operating expenditures are the same as they were last month. Any questions on operating? Okay, and then the trustee and benefits, which we've gone over multiple times now, unchanged from last month's, but hopefully next month that will all be, all will have been distributed. There any questions on the financials?
Okay, Crystal, or not, oh my goodness, Rachel.
Rachel.
Help me, help me understand this, this financial summary. So it's, I mean, it's taking what we've projected. Is it through, is, is what's going to be left after the end of the fiscal year? Or just the month?
Fiscal year.
Okay, and that's really the purpose of this report?
Yes, so you can kind of get an overview and see what's left over for the entire fiscal year and what we've expended so far.
And that money just stays in that particular fund? Is that correct?
After the close of the fiscal year. The general fund reverts, so so if you go back to the detail report, the whole top section there where it says total general fund 0001, that whole row there, that is just general funds, and at the end of the fiscal year, whatever's left over there reverts back. And we, we don't maintain that money.
You mean it goes back to the state?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, further questions? Hearing none, I would accept the motion to approve the financial budget.
Mr. Chair, can I make a more elegant way of, of making that motion? To accept as presented with the exception of trustee and benefits when the entire amount will be distributed to, through 7310 district allocations.
Good. Would someone like to make that motion?
This is Wendy, and I can make that motion.
Thank you, Wendy. We've agreed to the motion statement set forth by Mr. Merson, and Wendy has made that motion.
Well, second.
Second by Mr. Olson. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, opposed, same, okay, there you go, opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much, Rachel. Okay, our last item of business, the strategic plan, Ms. Merson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, a pretty simple update. Typically, we have a process to approve our annual strategic plan update. We, staff make some edits based on comments we've received from DFM and districts. We send it out to an administrator's review committee. They give us comments or no comments, and then we bring it back to you. It goes out to districts, comments again, and you approve it finally in June. This year, given that we underwent some pretty dramatic changes to our performance measures report and strategic plan with DFM last summer. And also the fact that we have a lot going on this year. What I have done is prepared a draft for your consideration. That really changes very little, except a few numbers on page 17. If you go back to page 17 of the agenda, page four of the strategic plan, you'll see that we upped the benchmarks for performance measures on district support to 90% instead of 85. And in CREP, we increased it to 20,000 acres enrolled in CREP. The following page, we updated numbers for the loan program. That little doorbell gets me every time. And we, we lowered the number of acres that are facilitated, of BMPs that are facilitated through RCRDP funding, reflecting the fact that things have kind of been readjusted in the performance measures report. We also increased the number of acres of cropland put into BMPs on groundwater quality and nitrate priority areas based on the stellar accomplishments of that program last year. We set a new 100% TMDL implementation of assigned plans. And so basically, it would appear that a strategic plan is an opportunity to do some really high-level thinking and planning for the future, and, and that's true. But really what this strategic plan does is it, it reports on some metrics that the legislature wants to hear about. We have negotiated these new metrics with DFM. And so while it might be tempted to add new goals, I would hesitate to do that at least this year. And so I'm bypassing the big process that we typically take, and I'm asking that you just go ahead and approve these, this plan with the revised numbers and give me the authority to make a minor adjustment on the, if you go to page number 19, which is the page six of the strategic plan, number four, other strategic plan requirements. For the last several years, we've had new other strategic plan requirements that have been dictated by the governor's office. And so if you'll allow me to respond to that by possibly changing this one. We, we typically do this in June, but I'm trying to get as much stuff done ahead of time as I can. So I'm asking that you go ahead and approve that with that editing authority today.
I have a question.
Yes.
Back on goal number one, support districts voluntary conservation efforts. Satisfy 90% of conservation districts with commission services and programs. Seems like we had a question that was brought up, or, or a comment here that was brought up. Do we have 100% of our districts responding?
Mr. Chairman, we never have 100% of districts responding, and this was, this was a very difficult process to come up with these numbers. There's also a question of, you know, to what extent do our efforts drive that district satisfaction? I'm not sure that I would have chosen these metrics, but the fact of the matter is they were chosen together with DFM. And so, Dylan, do you want to put any input on that number going up to 90%? I think Corinne worked on that with you.
My question was this, do we need to put a further statement there saying that 9% of conservation district commission service and programs with the districts reporting?
I think we certainly could, could do that. I think that would be fair.
All we can do is ask and, and remind, we can't require them to report. So it's 90% of the, of the districts reporting that we can never, ever ask for, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good, that's a good edit, and we can certainly do that. We can look at any of the other numbers that might be conditional on how many responses we get to things and make similar edits and notes if necessary, because this 90% sets us up for failure.
This is Wendy, and I agree. I mean, that's, why, why do we need to put the 90%? The districts are so different. But they expect what they need from us, what they want from us. And I, I just think setting the bar too high means too much work in trying to, in trying to meet a, a goal that's not, not, not necessary, not.
Sure. So the problem is that there is a requirement that anything that goes into the strategic plan remain in the strategic plan for four years before it can disappear. And so the performance measures and benchmarks that we had prior to this, we still have to include them in our strategic plan for four more years. So I'll have to, I have to check because the 90% was in our performance measures report that we approved last August. And so this merely reflects what was in the last report. And, and there's, maybe Rob, I don't know if Rob's on, but part of the things that legislators do is they follow it and the progress year to year to year. So to, to adjust it is not as simple as it might sound, right, Rob?
So, Mr. Chairman, so generally, we do like to see these performance measures when we're looking at the budget. You know, through statute, we're supposed to consider these performance measures and ensure that they are, you know, being looked at and help us guide, how is the agency doing with their budget? You know, what are their potential weaknesses? Where are areas that we might improve? So we do like to see some continuity, although if I recall, there were already some adjustments made. So the, the commission already has kind of a older version and newer versions set up that are kind of running in parallel. That, I think that's a good way to, to do that. I don't necessarily know if it's looked upon negatively to have adjustments to these performance measures. But certainly, you know, DFM is, is the agency that's supposed to be kind of giving the direction for these performance measures. So I would defer to them for most of that. But from the legislative side, we do like to see some continuity, although we understand if, you know, there are adjustments, you know, why is that the case, I think is more important than if. Hopefully that helps.
I think that is helpful, and we can certainly go ahead and put, put those in the approved plan, change them to what, what seems reasonable, and we'll just put a footnote there stating that the commissioners wanted to adjust number. And as long as we can explain what happened, I think there's some degree of forgiveness for that.
Yeah, absolutely. If I might again, yeah, I think that the, the reasoning is more important than if there was an adjustment, you know. If, certainly if there's a commission or DFM direction, that, that's absolutely a reasonable reason to, to change something.
So, Mr. Chair, I guess maybe it would be helpful to know what numbers you would like to change and to what.
Well, I'm not sure the numbers, this is me talking here, the numbers need to be changed. I think this needs to be footnoted down below, that that's a percentage of came from counties that responded. We could put down how many responded down there, saying, okay, we had 45 counties responded, or 40, or whatever. But I think we need to put a footnote down there saying that is the response percentage from the counties that filled out the questionnaire.
I think that would be a, a good adjustment that we could then we could do that. Can't remember if the, typically, if we have that 90% of those that respond, or is that still high?
As a percentage of those that have responded, I think we, well, we hit one year 92%, right? But, and, and we're up and down in the 80s and.
We're 88 now, I think.
Yeah, and honestly, from my perspective, I don't have a problem with putting a, a goal that's something we have to work for, that isn't a given, that, well, yeah, we always get 45, you know, we always get. Just because we don't attain it, I don't think we get, we get demerits because we don't hit our, in, in a performance measure like this, because we don't hit the goal. I think it's good to have a high goal. I mean, we all want, do we not, 100% district satisfaction, so to include in our strategic plan a goal of 90%. Really? Are we satisfied with 10% of the districts not happy with us? Well, we're being realistic, and we're not going to keep everybody happy all the time, so. I, I really like, Chairman, I really like your idea of the footnote, that this is a metric that's based on the, we, we don't have any control over how many districts are going to respond and how many are not. And it's kind of outside of our authority to extrapolate based on the responses we do get and assume that that means it, it can be applied to all 50 districts. I like your idea of the footnote, and I don't have any problem with changing the, the metric or the, the goal to whatever you guys are comfortable with.
I think too that this goal number one is the only sort of qualitative kind of thing that we have to quantify, the rest are acres or, you know, pounds of, of things diverted. So putting that on there, I think, is, is fair. Because as Dylan said, not everybody is. Because as Dylan said, not everybody is going to be happy with you all the time, and it may not be for the same reasons that everybody else is happy with you. That makes sense.
All right. Further comment? We want to leave it alone, 90%, but just footnote down below that this is on the, first, based on the counties that responded?
Kathy Romer here. Well, I, I think, I think footnotes are valuable. I mean, it's been good discussion and it's a footnote for reference with little information. Gives us some latitude.
Okay. So do we want to go with that type of motion, or do you want to change it, or we want to do something different?
So I have a question, this is Wendy again. Um, so a strategic plan, help me understand, is this something that the commission creates, or is it really what the Department of Financial Management requires and kind of creates that we follow?
Mr. Chair, I would say both. We receive a template annually and I think it's fair to say that every time there's a different governor, the, the governor may have a different kind of goal for what they want produced. But Rob talked about when the budget is, is considered the desire on the part of the legislature to have a connection to some sort of performance review. And so DFM went back last August, July, and, and really worked with the agencies to get something that they felt was instructive to the legislature as to how successful we had been. And so there's not really a lot of room for revisions or a different direction on it. We were given a template and we were, we worked closely with David Hahn, who was attentive to every word in, in objectives, key performance measures and targets and benchmarks. And we worked quite a few hours with David on this that you see.
So let me just throw this out, and that's all it is, is just something thrown out. When I looked at this and slept on it and that first page where it says key external factors that could affect the agency's ability to meet the goals and objectives. If we really want to be honest, we put the breakdown of partnership with the ideal association of soil conservation districts, and then we'd have a goal of how we were going to address that.
You'll see, Mr. Chairman, that no edits were made to that portion, it has, as it has been for, well, since 2012, 2013, that front section. And, and for history's sake, in 2012, we did an extensive rewrite of the strategic plan on this front section that was vetted by every board member from IASCV, a number of the districts, all of our partners, we had a facilitator who came in, and, and we wordsmithed. And so certainly, I have not suggested changing anything all the way to the core functions because of that process and respect for the fact that it was agreed upon. I think that that might be a valuable external factor to note, but I'm not sure that it's a valuable external factor to note in a document that has really wide public distribution, if you will. The, the legislature has been very direct with us about how the commission and IASCV need to get on the same page. And I, I don't believe that it would be of value to, to point that out to the legislature annually or whatever. I mean, we could, but it's just kind of stirring up more stuff. Let me also say that the strategic planning and performance measurements report is, it's not just us, it's an attempt to take everything, every executive agency and put it together in a cohesive, consistent, easily digestible manner. And so we're oftentimes discouraged from kind of being innovative and getting out there and doing things because then it's just this bunch of noise of all these agencies doing different things. And so to an extent, we, we have to sacrifice the creativity we could otherwise put into this for the, the whole. The document as a whole, I don't think there's anything that would preclude this agency from, you know, creating an annual document where you have those sorts of things that, you know, you can communicate and you can focus on and you can direct staff to work on, or even a two-year or a three-year. But this particular document is mandated by statute. The governor's office has developed a format and a template that they really want us all to conform to. So if we want to do that other thing, I think we can do it, but we need to do it over here in an informal manner that just sort of kind of guides us.
That's very reasonable, Terry.
Okay. So are we ready to approve this? Or do we want to make some more adjustments or?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is Commissioner Romer, so based on the, what Terry just previously spoke, is a footnote pointing to other information acceptable within the governor's plan or DFM?
Um, I think, I don't, I don't know that I would put a footnote pointing to the existence of another plan. I think the way I would look at it would be an internal, what's a good word for that? Just a staff guidance or board guidance about, you know, we can play with names for it, but I don't know that I would reflect it in here. The only thing I think that perhaps we might want to do a footnote on is stating that when we say satisfy 90% of conservation districts, we're saying 90% of the districts that respond to our survey.
Well, and that, that was, I guess I should have been more specific, but yeah, because that clarifies and yet gives room for the individuality, et cetera.
Correct. I think also you look at the other footnotes down there, it talks about it was developed in collaboration with legislators and partners in 2012. It's entirely reasonable that we just add another footnote there to, to qualify that.
Okay, thank you. That was my direction. It helped me.
Sure, and so, I mean, I don't want to let this other thing go, Commissioner Pratt, but perhaps after the first of the fiscal year, it would be an appropriate time to do some sort of, you know, boards have retreats and they, they kind of try to come up with their focus and their themes and their, you know, things like that. Maybe that would be an appropriate item to have on an agenda. And talk about that.
Yeah, I really like, I like that idea, so I'm glad Wendy brought that up in order to have that conversation and response, Terry, so, thank you.
So what I'll do is I'll put it on the list for the agenda for probably September because August is very full. But September, typically all we're doing is approving, you know, kind of looking at district reports and so September's kind of a quieter month. That might be a time when, you know, we pull you all together and you sit down and you just say, well, what do we do with soil health and how do I reflect the fact that that's one of my priorities? And maybe it could be informational to staff, but we'll, we'll put it on the agenda in September.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, then with that comment, are we ready to go ahead and approve this strategic plan? With the revision that we talked about, and allow the administrative to make minor changes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olson. Do we have a second?
Kathy Romer, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Do we have further questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, with that, that wraps up our meeting according to my agenda. Do we have anything else that we need to discuss somewhere?
Nothing on my end.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none. The motion to adjourn, I just made that, and we'll see you all next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and
Thank you.
and commissioners. Over and out.